Good evening, everyone. The time is now 5:29. All mics are live and we are broadcasting on all platforms.
Having the appointed time. Having the appointed time of 5:30 arrived, I would like to call the Tuesday, September 30th, 2025 Committee of the Whole to Order. Would you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, would you please take the role?
Yes, ma'am. Alderman Cox.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford. Alderwoman Purchase. Alderwoman Natriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley. Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer. Madam Chairman, you have a quorum.
I would accept a motion to allow Alderwoman Conley to...
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I would accept a motion for the approval of the September 9th, 2025 Committee Meeting Minutes.
Still moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, so we have a couple of presentations this evening. I will say, first up, let's hear from Director Dahl. He has a special event to tell us about.
Thank you, Chairwoman.
You're welcome.
So, fresh off the Mother Road Festival, we had record crowds this weekend in Ward 5 and record number of registrations. So, fresh off that, we welcome the World Clydesdale Championships. This is an event that only comes around every four years. Our next available time to get them will be eight years from now. This was sourced through the Visit Springfield office. One of our sales executives, Hannah Johnson, she's a past World Clydesdale Queen. She's got the inside tracked and she brought them to Springfield. We're so proud to have them here. I mean, in 2028, they'll be heading to Scotland, so it tells you how unique it is to have them here. We kicked it off this morning with the WMAY AM Springfield Live Remote, right out there at the livestock center. The Budweiser Clydesdales were there. Thank you, Mayor Busher, for joining us this morning. So, we kicked it off there and it's free and open to the public, starting tomorrow all the way through Sunday. And some highlights here, they'll start off tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., they'll have evening classes at 5:00 p.m. The Budweiser Clydesdale Beer Garden will be open every day, so you can go out and see the Budweiser Clydesdale if you so and choose. Have a beverage as well. Thursday, 7:00 a.m., all day long as well. There's a banquet that evening. I believe that's not open to the public, but they'll have a banquet that night. Continue on Friday, again, 7:00 a.m., all day long through 5:00 o'clock evening classes. That's at the Coliseum. Again, free to the public, just go to the Coliseum and see these magnificent animals out there. They're truly stunning, for sure. And then on Saturday, again, all day long, 8:00 a.m., 4:00 classes, you can go out there. And they're having a block party for the public, right outside of the Coliseum, open to the public. You can go out there, again, meet with some of these handlers, see these magnificent animals, and really join that block party on Saturday, and then they wrap up on Sunday. Just such a privilege to have them here in Springfield, and we're so honored that they chose Springfield. And our really great Illinois State Fairgrounds, the investment that the governor's made over the past few years, the $100 million really shows when you get out there. So, we encourage the public, certainly the council, to get out there and support the World Clydesdale Show while it's in town. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director. All right, and next up, we will have a presentation from George Godfrey. I have invited Mr. Godfrey here to speak tonight because he has a wealth of information about a topic that is near and dear to my heart. You guys will remember from last year that I was helping to sponsor an ordinance to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day in the city of Springfield. And that time is Indigenous Peoples' Day is coming right up, and so I thought this would be a good time for us to learn a little bit about the holiday and Indigenous people in our area, who lived and live in our area. So, Mr. George Godfrey is an extremely talented and exceptional individual. Born in Shawnee, Oklahoma, Godfrey moved frequently between South Dakota, Arizona, and Nebraska with his parents as a child. Godfrey's father worked for the Bureau of Indian Affairs and introduced him to numerous Native American cultures. Godfrey graduated with a bachelor's degree in biology from Northern State University in Aberdeen, South Dakota. From there, he continued his education, earning his PhD in entomology at Cornell University. His success in school led him to his first career researching lebiod... that, I can't say, you will have to say that for us, at the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. Godfrey's work there led him to his next position as a professor at Haskell Indian Nations University in Lawrence, Kansas, where he became the Vice President of Academic Affairs. He later moved to Washington, D.C. as a National Program Leader for Grant Programs at Tribal Colleges. Godfrey continues to learn about his family history and the Potawatomi Nation. He lives on the outskirts of Athens, Illinois, and his wife Pat is the president of the Potawatomi Trail of Death Association. He is currently working on two more books to add to the collection that he has written. The first is a science fiction novel called Cheyenne Oil, and the other is another work of historical fiction titled The Removal, which is based off the forced removals of the Potawatomi in the mid-1830s. And, Mr. Godfrey, would you please join us?
Point of order, Chair?
Sure.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Mr. Carlson.
Point of order, and maybe it's more towards Corporation Council. And I know we got the email the other day, so what is the difference of what we're hearing here, where I think I'm used to hearing a presentation about city business versus five minutes at the end of the meeting? Why are we allowing this? And shouldn't they just get their five minutes at the end of the meeting?
So, this is the chair inviting... the chair of the meeting has discretion to invite this presentation up. We do not have, in our rules of procedure, anything regarding presentations. So, deferring to Robert's Rules of Orders, the chair has wide discretion who she can invite to speak.
I mean, it's kind of a slippery slope. I mean, I can just, I mean, I can just see going down the road every Tuesday.
So, it won't be every Tuesday. It will be when the chair... I am the chair of this meeting now.
But you're interrupting my point.
Yeah, well, I'm the chair, so I'll interrupt as I see fit. I really appreciate your open-mindedness and welcoming spirit, Alderman Carlson. I... this isn't up for debate. The chair has the prerogative to invite people to speak, and I have invited Mr. Godfrey. I didn't even realize the rest of the council was aware of this. Can I see a show of hands how many other people knew that a presentation had been rejected earlier this week?
Had been rejected? I mean, didn't we get an email on this?
Did we? No. Maybe just certain people got emails, perhaps.
Chair, I mean, or can we take a vote on this, whether we allow it?
No, you may not.
I'm asking...
I am the chair.
I'm asking Corporation Council, I'm just trying... I'm just trying to do this respectfully and ask some questions. That's all I'm trying to do. Because, again, all I'm saying is, we're headed down a slippery slope. To me, it would be want to hear from them. I think it's probably great information. But to me, it's more appropriate, at the end of the meeting, the five minutes that we allow, you know, the general public.
So, I will need a couple of minutes to answer that question.
And we could have been halfway.
Obviously, this invitation came up to me five minutes before the meeting. So, to answer your question on the point of order, I will need a couple of minutes with Robert's rules.
Thank you.
I apologize, Mr. Godfrey, and I apologize to everyone here. That's... yeah.
Chair, Chair.
Yes.
Can I make a motion to just recess the meeting for a couple of minutes to get Corporate Council?
Okay. All those in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. We'll recess for five minutes. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Yeah.
You still there, Erin?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let's resume.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes.
Based on our meeting and meeting with Corporation Murdoch, I withdraw my point of order. We have nothing, apparently, in the rules on this, so thank you. Proceed.
Thank you, Alderman Carlson. Mr. Godfrey, Professor Godfrey.
I first just want to briefly say that I am Potawatomi and from Oklahoma.
Pull your mic down, please.
I am Potawatomi from Oklahoma. And the Potawatomi are closely related to the Ottawa and to the Jibway. Within the context of the relation to Springfield, I would like to say that two of our children died on the banks of the Sangamon River, which is now a part of Springfield. And the deaths were where the East Water Treatment Plant is in Springfield. And on the 29th of September of 1838, the Potawatomi were led through Springfield, and there was a trail of about three miles long. You had 800 and some people. You also had 300 horses, baggage wagons, and so forth. And so, the passage through Springfield was part of the Potawatomi removal from Indiana, which started on the 4th of September, and it ended on the 4th of November. Some people walked every step of the way. Other people were sick and were put into the baggage wagons and either died or survived. But the Potawatomi were a peaceful people at that point. I realize that there were lingering problems and lingering suspicions of the Potawatomi. Would they reside, would they side with the British after the War of 1812, or would they not? The people who were removed did not side with the British. The leader of the Potawatomi that were left and removed from Indiana was a pastor. He was a peaceful man, but he got removed. He got thrown into a jail wagon. His hands were tied, and with two other men, they rode in that wagon all the way to Danville, Illinois, before they were released. They traveled all the way through Illinois, entering in the Danville area and passing through Springfield, and then departing Illinois in Quincy. I'd also like to point out that Springfield is in the midst of Sangamon County. Sangamon is a Potawatomi word, which means lots to eat. And so, there were connections with the Potawatomi in this area until the removal started in the 1830s and continued until the 1850s. The removals are a very complicated and extensive subject. You cannot possibly begin to cover it in a short length of time. And so, I would like to simply say in closing that we are part of your history, and we want to be continued to be remembered as a part of your history. So, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you so much. And thank you, Michelle, who I've been working with on recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day in our area, for letting me know that yesterday was actually the state of Illinois Indigenous Peoples' Day. How timely. All right, so, next we have ordinances tabled or remaining in committee. Mr. Clerk, could you please read those ordinances?
Yes, ma'am. 2025-247 and 2025-281 remain tabled or in committee.
All right, was there anyone who would like to remove any of these ordinances for committee consideration? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to ordinances for committee consideration. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the ordinances for CWLP?
2025-374, an ordinance authorizing a third one-year contract extension and additional funding in the amount of $34,968 under the contract number UW230315. Wood chipping and removal for lake services with Rex D. Evans, DBA Evans Cottage, for the total amount not to exceed $139,872 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any against? The ayes have it.
2025-375 is an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the agreement with Simon's Industries, Inc., Simon's Power Technologies International for the additional three-year license term for the PPSE software program in the amount not to exceed $132,012 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-376 is an ordinance accepting U.S. Department of Energy's federal formula grant funding, Sections 401, 01D, preventing outages and enhancing the resilience of the electric grid opportunity, CSFA number 560003393, from the Illinois Finance Authority, in the amount of $1,127,470 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025, Public Works, 2025-377, an ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation in the amount of $32,845 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2025-378 is an ordinance to increase the number of Class E liquor licenses by one for LD Pope, Inc., DBA Parkway Cafe located at 2715 North Dirksen Parkway.
Move for consent, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-379, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class AA liquor licenses by one due to the closure of business by Tiara Ferment LLC, DBA, Tiara Ferment located at 204 South Sixth Street.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-380, an ordinance to decrease the number of Class C liquor licenses by one and increase the number of Class B liquor licenses by one for Casey's Retail Company, DBA Casey's General Store, number 2285, located at 3001 Ridge Avenue.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
None.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-381, an ordinance authorizing the transfer of appropriation authority for the Community Development Block Grant from one account to another in the amount of $900,000 for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-382, an ordinance authorizing payment of $199,947 to Arthur Gallagher Risk Management Services, Inc., for renewal of annual premiums for coverage in certain commercial properties for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-383, an ordinance authorizing additional supplemental appropriation for year-end budget reconciliations for fiscal year 2025 for the Office of Budget and Management.
Move for consent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-384, an ordinance authorizing a one-year renewal agreement between the City of Springfield and Basham Government Solutions, LLC, Contract RFQ MA 24-18 for professional lobbying services for the amount not to exceed $75,000 for the Office of the Mayor.
Move for consent.
Second.
And, oh, I haven't been asking any discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-385, an ordinance amending Chapter 110, Article 37 of the 1988 Springfield City Code of Ordinances, as amended, regulating temporary street closures for residential block parties as special events.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-386, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a two-year warranty extension, warranty coverage for '99 JetTech S410G5 laptop mobile computers in the amount of $71,775 for the PCN Strategies, Inc., for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it.
2025-387, an ordinance accepting and authorizing contract PD 2608-27 with Morrow Brothers Ford, Inc., for the purchase and delivery of two Ford Mavericks for the amount not to exceed $60,570 for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for debate. Debate. Motion for debate.
Second. Hey, any discussion?
Uh, yes.
Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Um, I, I just have a couple of questions, and maybe Chief can expound on me. These, these vehicles are for our community service officers, so this, is this the traffic unit?
Yeah, so we, we have three community service officers now. They had Ford Focuses. Actually, all three Ford Focuses are in pretty bad shape. We're trying to salvage one. And then, these Mavericks will replace two of those Focuses. The reason we went with the small truck was to help us assist getting the, the SkyWatch trailer cams around and getting the, the other trailer, the signage trailer around as well.
How, what's, do we know the difference of between some Ford Focuses and, 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 um, these vehicles here? Is there, is there much difference?
Cost-wise?
Yes.
We didn't price a Focus. It really wasn't gonna do what we needed to do as far as towing things around, so we looked for the most economical vehicle that we could find as it pertained to at least pulling a, a small trailer around.
That's, that's a great, that's, you know, I, I hear your explanation on it. I, I just think that, um, I mean, I know we have a lot of trucks. We bought some new trucks, right, in the recent years and stuff. And, um, you know, I, I just see our vehicles just getting bigger and, you know, markings. I know the markings changed from traffic warden to community service, service person. Is that, is that different from Public Works, um, community service?
Yeah, we don't, uh, yeah, that doesn't cross over at all as far as whatever Public Works has to go on, community service or parking meter enforcement. That's separate from us.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm just interested in the cost, the cost differences in between these four Focuses and, and these, um, these vehicles here, um, you know, for several reasons. Chief, we're gonna be coming up on a tight budget. I just wanna make sure that we're being fiscally responsible.
Sure, a lot of this, um, a majority of this money, I believe, came out of our DUIF fund, which is our DUI asset forfeiture fund.
All right, I appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
There's someone else for you, Chief? Alderman Donalum.
Thank you, Chair. I was gonna ask this offline, but since you're up there, Chief, is, are the Mavericks, are those hybrid trucks? I always wondered that.
I don't believe they are.
Okay, thank you.
That would, actually, I think, probably drive the price up even a little bit more.
Well, we don't want that.
Yeah.
Um, and I have one thing.
Sure.
So, uh, what trailers are we hauling with the community service officers?
Our SkyWatch trailer, which is our, our trailers that have the camera systems on and the flashing lights and stuff. Also, the signage trailer that we have in our traffic division that we can put out. We put it out for the golf tournament down at Panther Creek to kind of direct traffic, or we can put it out on particular areas, maybe have the speeding issues and kind of put a message on there and, or direct traffic in a certain, certain way.
Okay. Um, forgive me for my ignorance, but what do our community service officers do exactly?
So, we changed our traffic warden officers to community service officers, and so they do all the traffic enforcement as, as it pertains to illegally parked vehicles, abandoned cars, stuff like that. They also help us with fly dumping, and they also help us with some of the stuff out at the lake. And we also included the moving of the trailers around in this new job description that we, that we changed earlier this year.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Wales?
Okay, where were we? Any more discussion? No more?
Unfinished business.
I don't think we voted.
No.
No, we haven't voted on this.
Uh, Alderman Purchase.
Nope, I pressed the button too quick.
Oh, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Um, unfinished business. I believe Alderman Purchase has... Oh, okay, there we go, yeah.
Chuck just said a ton, but it won't be that much. So, first, I would like to say, congratulations, and thank you to the community for coming out for the DSI Friends of the Market. It was our 10th annual. This is what keeps DSI thriving and going to be able to showcase all of our farmers market vendors, their local fresh produce that comes with these meals. It's a three-course entree, so it was really, really nice, and the weather was great.
It was more than three courses.
Yeah, well, yeah, and a lot of wine. But thank you so much to everyone and all the businesses downtown who participated, and to my colleagues that came out and participated, and then moving right along into Mother Road. It was very, very exciting. We had over 2,000 cars registered just to do the parade, the cruise into downtown. It was nice. I was a little agitated, though. We just put in new streets, and these people were just like making their tires just burn rubber on some of the areas. But outside of that, it was very nice. Everyone participated, patronized businesses, and last but not least, where's Director Fooks? He's normally sitting in the back where all you're in a different area today. I just wanted to say to you, Director Fooks, um, thank you so much to our Public Works Department. The crews were out there every day leading up to the event, all of the infrastructure, the construction that has went on, so even the cleanup. I was down there and watched how we moved the, the signs out the way. The police department showed me the new Help Me Out Corporation Council, what are they called? We just purchased them.
Barricades?
Yes. Those worked as well. I just had one concern. I sat there and watched a car pull over and get out and move our barricade out the way on Fifth and Jefferson, so just trying to figure out how to do that some, some way, too, where it's like, they were pretty smart. They, it took a while for me to learn how to unlock it and move it, and they just knew what to do. So, just thinking of things like that. But outside of that, our Public Works Department did a phenomenal job.
Well, thank you very much, Alderman. I appreciate that, and I'll be sure to pass that along to everybody. The guys and gals at Public Works take great pride in their work, and this is one of the biggest parties that the City of Springfield throws, and we worked a lot to make sure it was in as good a shape as we could get it. On Friday night, when the traffic division was removing the barricades, I was down there with them for a while, and I was pleasantly, pleasantly pleased that how little litter there was. If I saw three wadded-up napkins and maybe a smashed paper cup, that was it. Our guests...
Or it's gonna be the opposite during St. Patty's Day.
Well, our, our guests were, were not only well-behaved, except for some of the, the burnouts, but they took great care. Not only was there very, very litter, but the organizers had dumped all the trashcans. The dumpsters were full, but the trashcans were empty. They did an excellent job. They were tremendous guests, and I know we'd love to have them back anytime.
Thank you so much. And then, last but not least, I wanted to give a huge shout-out to MG Stewart Land Designs, all of the planters. When you all walk around downtown or drive by and see them, this is a landscaping crew. I personally know Marcus and his wife, and they took great pride in putting the plants and the flowers and the mums in. So, I wanted to give them a kudo, too, as well, because this is a part of the beautification that I know that the mayor is pushing for, and Roy laughs at me and says that I'm always trying to be Marcus Stewart with planting. So, it worked out really good for us, and that's all I have. That was pretty short, Chuck.
Yeah, awesome, thank you. And I would just like to say, on the, um, the Friends of the Market Street Dinner, it was really nice. I encourage everybody to, to go next year. It was a beautiful evening, and for like a hundred dollars, you help the friends of, um, the farmers market, and you get fabulous food from local restaurants downtown. And let me tell you, we had a, what was the rib? It was huge, from Maldonner's. Chef Higgins outdid himself. Um, I believe it was a short rib that I could have ate on for three days. So, please, consider it next year.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Gregory.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Fooks, Director Fooks. So, I wanna start out with the good, and I'll go to the bad and the ugly, but, um...
Well, you got the ugly right here.
No, 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 no. So, first off, I, I, you know, I, I'm not real big on, on thanking people for doing their jobs, but I, I will say, when, when I see us go outside of our, our realm and, and really try to help people, and, and Rob, for, excuse me, for speaking on the topic in your ward. But I, I wanna commend and, and thank those who worked on this young lady's situation over on the north side of town. This young lady has been out of her house since April. No, no issue due to her. She comes back from out of town, sewage everywhere, contractor messed up, whatever. And through that process, Director Fooks and, and, and his other staff have been great responding, even, even in the late wee hours of the night, trying to make sure that this young lady and her four kids had someplace to stay, and she's still out of this house to this day. So, imagine yourselves living in a hotel with four kids since April with no problem. Your first home. So, the comfort and the, the response. I also wanna thank our Senator for, for, for really, really joining in to try to get this issue resolved. So, I appreciate you on that. Um, the bad. We have an issue, and, and, and not only you and our police department need to work on, because this is a serious issue, but we have someone, young, old, I don't really care, throwing rocks, big rocks, off of these underpasses. Not the first time that I've heard about this. This has been three to four separate incidents where rows of cars are pulled over with big dents in their windows. Some of them went through. One of them hit a lady. She bleeding out everywhere. This is a very, 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 very serious issue. So, publicly, publicly announcement, the news help us share this. If you got young kids, teenage kids, know where they're at. It won't be fun if they're caught throwing these things. People can die from this. This is very, very serious. I take those bridges from Sixth Street, um, 11th Street. We have one on Cook Street. This is a very, very serious issue, and it's not concentrated to any one underpass. And now, the final, the ugly. I appreciate our, our Public Works, um, department as, as Alderman Purchase said, we have some very good employees. So, I'm disappointed to hear that we had a gentleman in there using a racial slur. I know that it has been dealt with, um, but, but for us as a council and us as a city, I think we have to push back and make that publicly known, as we do everything else, that this is not unacceptable in our city. The use of the N-word is not acceptable in our city. And I, and I, and I get it, right? Some people will say, oh, well, you know, black folks use it amongst each other. That very well may be, but it's an unacceptable word. It's used in a derogatory, uh, uh, manner. And, and, and anybody who feels like, oh, because black people may say it to each other in, in a context, that it is fine for them, I, I would challenge them to say it now. I'll say it with them, if you feel that way. But we all know that should be unacceptable, and it starts with leadership. And I hope, I know that's not what the mindset that you're pushing down to our employees. This council, I hope we all stand together to push back with all of our employees, that that word, racism, any of this goofiness, is not acceptable in the City of Springfield workforce. We don't want it in our city, but we have no control over that. But what we do have control over is our workers and how they conduct themselves on a daily basis. We have many, many African-American workers, not only in that department, but throughout this whole city workforce. That, that travels to it. It makes them uncomfortable. And we have to understand, and I hope that we push back on that. I hope the mayor's office pushes back on that and makes that clear, that it's unacceptable. Um, and that's my take on that. I, I appreciate you, sir.
Uh, when it was brought to my attention, we dealt with it as quickly as we could. I think the punishment was meted out as quickly as we could in consult, consultation with union representatives, and, uh, I believe it's been dealt with. I don't believe it is a common attitude in Public Works. I certainly will not tolerate it. You don't use that kind of language. I don't use that kind of language, and I won't have anybody around me that does.
Absolutely. I appreciate you, sir, for your openness with that, and, and I look forward to continuing to work. You know, I'm, I'm surprised... Uh, you know, I'm, I'm surprised to hear that in, in our Public Works Office, um, so, and I'll leave it at that.
So is alright.
Thank you, I appreciate you, sir. Um, I just got a few more topics, I promise you, I'm gonna be fast, I missed that, that, that last weekend. So, uh, two weeks ago, our, my brother was speaking on the, uh, minority reporting system, Ethan. And, and right now, you know, from the report, from the total report that we got, we're sitting at about thirty percent minority, which is, which is good. That's, 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 that's good, right? Um, but we're only sitting at twenty-eight percent local. So what does that mean for us? That means thirty million dollars or so is leaving our community and not going into the community, into the hands of our pockets. We have a fifty percent, um, local goal. And we're well beneath, beneath that, you know, and, and, you know, I, I, um, I encourage our mayor, um, to do whatever her and Katia was working on. As far as whether we gotta fine companies for not meeting these expectations or whether we gotta require it. I know I checked into that before, a long time ago, and it wasn't something that we legally could do. I know the mayor and her, her staff is looking into what we can do. But that's very, very, very important as far as, um, local workforce, we cannot sustain with, I'm happy that, you know, minorities from other communities are coming in, making the money. But I really, really, really be happy to see people from Springfield, minorities and non-minorities making the money, including our females. We're, we're, we're at about two point five percent on that out of eight percent goal. Um, these aren't, aren't hard goals, um, Popper Place had a thirty-three percent minority percentage. So I wanna continue to work with you on meeting these numbers and be serious about it. Um, yes, we, we talk about minority numbers, but we want them to be local minority numbers. We, we don't want, you know, that, that does us no good to have, you know, everybody from the surrounding towns working, um, just to meet a number, right? Um, any feedback, I don't wanna cut you off, cause I'm moving along.
No, no, I, I absolutely agree and again, I would say that is the, one of the main purposes of our Minority Business Institute that's starting in January. I know it's one of the main purposes of the CAP nineteen oh eight Business Institute that is starting, I believe, the twenty-fifth of this month. So if people haven't registered for that, I encourage them to. Um, I met with representatives from the Chamber of Commerce just about two weeks ago and they're helping us put together a small business symposium. My hope for this is that it, it better educates our small business owners, especially our contractors, on the processes that are taken to apply to be subcontractors. As you know, any, any contract that, um, is signed over fifty thousand dollars has to come across my desk for, uh, minority subcontractor participation. And the reality of the situation is even when we don't have a minority subcontractor, it is hard to say that those, um, those main general contractors haven't made a good faith effort. Because they're following all of our rules and regulations and putting the information out there. And unfortunately, um, depending on what the job is, we don't get as many responses from minority subcontractors to be a part of, you know, these major projects. So one thing that we're hoping to do is increase the level of education on the process about how you go and you, you actually apply. How do you look for these main contracts and say, hey, my business would be great here? It's a possibility that these programs that we're putting on encourage people to become registered with the state and registered with the city and then have more opportunities. We're also hoping to build organic relationships between our subcontractors, especially our minority subcontractors locally here and some of our larger general contractors. I think that would be one way to consistently increase the numbers and consistently increase our local numbers here. Because we've now built these organic relationships that are evolving and as those opportunities become more consistent, it allows our minority businesses to increase their capacity. And have more opportunities to do more, more work, not just here, but in our surrounding areas.
Right.
One thing we've looked at through our offices, what's our minority subcontractor list? What's the list in Champaign, what's the list in Peoria? We came to figure out, no matter what the numbers say on their websites, when you look down the, at the list of contractors and subcontractors, they're the same. So Champaign is calling in a lot of our minority subcontractors for work, Peoria, Bloomington, Decatur. So our subcontractors are getting work, but if we could increase the, the pool to actually pull from and the knowledge on the process here at home. And as we're doing that, create more minority businesses that are coming off the ground and, and knowing the process to follow as they're getting started. I believe will consistently increase those numbers. Alderman Gregory, I completely agree with you that, that raising those local numbers is definitely not just a goal, but I feel like a priority for something that we're trying to do. And so we're gonna throw the education and the programs at it and then we'll look back at the numbers and see what kind of increase we've had there. And then figure out what else we can do to help supplement with that education. But I think educating people on the process and the opportunities that are available is, is our priority first and foremost.
Director Fuchs, I'm sorry, do you mind if I ask a question?
Sure.
Thank you so much. Um, so the, uh, you're touching on something that's very familiar to me in my, uh, other job. And, um, I was just curious, so how do you have, uh, contractors prove their good faith efforts? And who makes that decision that they have or have not made a good faith effort?
So it would be up to me to sign off on whether or not they've had a good faith effort. Um, on the form that they fill out, they put out, when they put out the advertisement, how many advertisements they put out, whether it be in, um, the Springfield Business Journal. Or through email and through all the proper channels, they give a list of how many people have responded, how many minority subcontractors have responded, how many female-owned subcontractors have responded. And then what the competitive bids were. And so one thing I can say is, we have a, a good number of minority businesses, but they're not always necessarily focused in the areas that come up as subcontractors. So we have a lot of FBEs, which are female business enterprises, that might be with asphalt or trucking or other areas. That our MBE and FBE goals are under the same umbrella. So if they haven't found minority business enterprises that fit underneath that subcontracting goal, but they have found female business enterprises that fit under that subcontracting goal. Then I can't turn and say they haven't made a good faith effort because our, our goals are for both of those things combined. And so it's not that we have an imbalance, it is, and it's not that we have an imbalance between the number of MBEs and FBEs, they just tend to be in different avenues. And so therefore they're utilized more for different projects. Now, I would love to see more minority businesses that are focused in the trades. That's one thing that I go to schools and talk to kids about is, hey, you know, get into the trades, there are a, a ton of different trades. The Workforce Development Program that we have in Lincolnland Community College, I think is second to none. I think the unions that we have here throughout the city are second to none. There is a wonderful path for kids to have a, a great career, starting out and getting to be twenty-two years old and making a whole lot more money than I was at twenty-two years old. And being eligible to retire at forty-five, fifty and, and go do something else with their life. But at the same time, you also have the ability to get education and get an MBA along with that. Or a certification from a UIS or from a Lincolnland in business and say, okay, maybe I wanna take the path of a William Bishop the Fourth. Where I have my own business and it's in the trades and I'm an example as a businessman and someone who works in the trades, somebody who works with my hands. But also knows how to run the business in the office.
So I would, I would say that, um, what we really need to take a look at as a council is, uh, separating the female and minority goals. Setting separate goals on each project based on the project. And we can still use the combined formula on projects that, where the market will, will only bear that out. Um, but we certainly should not have them combined all the time. So if there's anything, um, in our code that we need to change, please let us know and, um, and we should get on that.
I do think that would be a way to get more accurate numbers on what our actual participation is, split between the two. If we wanna be more specific about what the goals are that we have and what we're looking for. That would also go into us probably separating that list out, so we could really see the difference in how many MBEs and how many FBEs that we have. And what are the categories that we have them in?
Oh, yeah, we gotta know all that.
What we need to prioritize and focus on moving forward as far as increasing the number of minority-owned businesses in certain areas. And also increasing the capacity of the businesses we already have.
And so do you have a staff member to help you with this?
Yes, I do.
Okay, perfect, yeah. Alderman Gregory, I'm so sorry.
No, no, thank you so much. Um, so, so in our, when, back in August, we, 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 um, had a letter and we, we sent it around to not only our cu- council and our caucus. But we spoke on a, a, a separate minority business enterprise. So, um, after we get trained up some, some individuals, um, I think that's a route that we need to explore. Among other things that I won't mention that, that, uh, myself and the caucus and friends of the caucus are looking into to try to make a dent in this. Cause this is serious, like, right, sixty million dollars have went out the, you know, are on the books for, for city projects. And only three hundred and fifty-four thousand that went to contractors, let alone the, the workers, just workers. Um, and that's a huge problem. Um, also in those reports, when we send them, if we could break down, um, by demographics of that, I think that's important, um, as well. So, so we can get a real picture of what's on those projects and what's not on those projects. Um, I appreciate you, but we rolled into the commission thing and I know that was a hot topic, um, a few weeks ago. Those commissions are, um, most of them are set by code and ordinance, they're supposed to be operating, um, diligently. I know that, um, part of the, part of the, um, confusion was, you know, who gets the agenda, who calls the beat? So one of the main agendas has to be, how do we do this? How do we, how do we come up with different things to increase this? Um, if there wasn't an agenda, you know, if that commission, um, wasn't given one, I would like you to give that, them that, um, initiative. To, to start working on ways that we can do that. Um, we have to take our part, we've tried years ago to put together a training force to train up young, young people within the community. Lincolnland does a great job as well, I'm a union brother myself, um, absolutely. But we need more, uh, as the numbers prove. We need more, more hands, training people from the community. Uh, we got all this grand money that Ms. Amy has, uh, in her office to do good work in our community, but we have very little workers to do the work. The big guys don't wanna do the little, the, the, the little petty stuff. But for a brother from poverty areas to do ten houses at ten thousand dollars or fifteen thousand dollars, it can change his life. And, and that's what I'm, I, I, you know, along with my, my friends is, is really trying to get to see a balance in this city, um, on, on what we put out. Um, and I hope that's, you know, no offense to you or, or anyone up here, it's just.
No, no, no offense taken at all, if I, you can find me ten Jermaine wards that I can sit and, and find a project to put them on, I will be extremely grateful.
How's that house going on, uh, over there?
So Jermaine actually just started working on it at the beginning of September, he's well underway, he's contacted me pretty consistently over the last couple of weeks. Um, I just put him in contact with Matt O'Shea because O'Shea Builders and, um, the workforce, the, excuse me, the Workforce Development Institute at Lincolnland. Will be helping and contributing to the work that's being done there. So they literally just got, got in contact with each other a couple of days ago, but Jermaine started that on the first of September.
This is what I, my last request on this, find somebody else besides O'Shea. O'Shea is the same company, excuse me, I'm, I'm talking. O'Shea's the same company that came up here and brought William Bishop the Fourth in front of us and bragged about how he was gonna be a forty-two percent and all this da-da-da. And our numbers are three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Out of sixty million dollars, they got a big portion of that sixty million dollars building those firehouses. So I'm disappointed in how that all played out with them. Um, we probably need to find somebody else that's genuine about raising up, um, minority businesses and, and helping them along. Not, not coming up here doing a facade and a song and a dance, we serious.
I definitely, I definitely understand the concern. Our issue is the amount that we had allocated toward that project between the price of materials and, and prevailing wage.
Yes, sir.
The prices and the bids that we were getting back to actually do the work were astronomical. And there were some organizations such as O'Shea that stepped up and said, hey, we will donate some labor here or some materials here to help you guys get the project done and get it over the line. So we can't exactly pick and choose who gives a, an offer of goodwill to help us with a project in the community that we are desperately trying to get over the line. And for the, the first bid that we had from a general contractor, we didn't get anyone, we put it out for bid originally. The one that we got back out of the hundred and twenty thousand dollar budget we had, budget we had, it was ninety-eight thousand dollars, which does not include the plumbing, does not include the electric, does not include the concrete in the garage in the backyard. So it, with finding people to help seemed like a more feasible plan than coming back to you guys and saying, hey, can we request more money to go toward this one house that's in the neighborhood? Because we also don't wanna negatively affect the property values of the other homes that are in the neighborhood. And the more money that you're putting into one specific house there compared to the other houses in the neighborhood could be a detriment to those other homeowners that have been there for a long time. So I definitely understand your concerns, it's a delicate balancing act that we're playing, trying to get this, this program over the line. I can say I did not think that it was going to be this difficult for us to get it done when I first presented the program. But we're, we're dedicated to getting it done and getting it done in that neighborhood and the work has started. However, if you have any other companies, especially minority-owned businesses, that are willing to donate some time or materials and effort to go toward a project of building a house on the east side. That will turn around and be a first-time home for one of our families here in Springfield, I would welcome any assistance that we can get.
On the next home, I know some guys, a guy in our community that will take one of those houses, he'll put his own money into it, he'll fix it up and he'll raffle it off at twenty dollars for people and give it away. That was the pro- the proposal that was given to me, but, but I haven't brought it yet. Because if I bring it, I, I was gonna give it to one of my, my colleagues to bring it, cause if I bring it, it won't happen. But those are the type of things that people are willing to do in our community, we're ready to do it. I would rather you come ask for, for, for more funding than this is just me, everybody might, they feel different. More funding for that than work with the company that is not genuine to, um, minority growth in our community. That's me, that's all on this topic, we'll, we'll keep talking, I don't wanna hold everybody up, I wanna, I wanna keep rolling. Um, my last point, we, we, we have.
You still need me?
Yes, absolutely, hell yeah, y'all took hours, yes, this is my time, you good to go.
We could be talking about cutting your ass.
Yes.
Sorry, there's nothing I can do.
Now, my last project, so Ms. Ms. Amy, I, I, I have, and, and this is probably gonna have to work with Matt McGlof and he's not here, but, so we got this cannabis grant thing. We got a guy, he's ready to execute, he bought a lot from us. Um, but now we're, you know, going through this process, the zoning is good, but now our traffic engineer is holding him up on, 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 on all of this. And, and so, so I guess what I'm saying is, is these, these cannabis grants, we can award them, we can, we can take, do the applause and all of that. But, but I'm not really happy, nobody's happy in the community until these things really, um, happen and evolve.
There's lots of moving pieces, yes.
Happen and evolve and, and your department has done great, Ms. Julia Griffin and Cave, they do a great job. And I know you, you have a new employee and I'm sure they'll do great. So this is not about the work, this is about our processes and how we do it. Um, another young man contacted me, he's so worried about having to fork out a hundred thousand dollars, um, on his project to get reimbursed. And, and I understand, I had good conversations with our Corporation Council on, on our, on our, on our processes and reimbursements and all of that. Um, I don't agree with it, but I understand it. But, but the message has to be to, to people who have such a large award, who, who may not have a hundred thousand dollars, is taking the small bites. If they gotta go ten thousand, do the work, turn it into us, get reimbursed and, and, and keep biting that thing off, then that's what they have to do until we figure out a better way for this, this, this to happen, um, in our community. Um, cause what we don't want is people getting these grants and then saying, well, I don't have fifty or a hundred thousand dollars to push out first and then wait on the city thirty, sixty, ninety, whatever it's gonna be to get their money back. And I think anybody can understand that. Um, so, so I guess my, my, my request from you is, is encourage them who have such high wants to take it in small bites and get the work done and get it reimbursed for now. And until we figure out, you know, a, a better way and a faster way to get these projects done. I, it's really important, um, it's starting to play some dividends, um, in our community with, with, with different businesses. We talk about businesses coming online and things like that and helping us drive tax revenue in our city. Um, and these, these things, um, our, our rules and internal barriers, um, hinder some of that. So, um, I just wanna encourage that from, from the department, um, and that's it, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. If I may, Chair, for a moment, I will give a brief update, he brought up cannabis grants. I wanted to give a brief update, if I could, for the Neighborhood Improvement Grants, um, for Far East and SAJ TIF that we put into place. We had a Community Outreach Day where we helped people learn more about the program, even start to fill out their application and show them examples. We had a complete packet put together where they could see examples of the various documents that were needed. Um, I can report today that, um, now this isn't gonna make Alderman, okay, so we have four out of Ward Three. That have their application packets in done and we only have one out of Ward Two. So I don't wanna cause any little dismay, but I thought that Alderman Williams might like to hear that. Um, I could also just share with you that the other, the other thing about getting communication out, as Alderman Gregory just brought out and trying to break down barriers is, we had one person. and trying to break down barriers, is we had one person come to, uh, well, we had a number of people, but one person came and they were not within those TIF districts. So we were able to talk to them about other programs. So we also now have a citywide, um, pending application coming in as well. Um, they understood where they stood as far as location wise and what we could cover for them, but they have applied for that grant, um, as well. So we have those, we have those moving forward. Um, they are not at a stage that, um, they've signed their agreements, but the agreements are, um, being drafted and going on for the next steps through legal. Um, right now, if we were just look at those five, I'll conclude by saying it's over a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, um, that could be allocated to homeowners.
No, great job on that. You know, I'm glad you did bring that up. Um, fabulous meeting. I, I received feedback from, from our community who did go in and get the information and stuff. Um, the same as, um, the Growth Alliance and the Springfield Project and their first community session over fifty registrations. People are engaged in what, in what we're doing, they're, they're excited about it. Um, and, 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 you know, I compliment your department on what you're doing. This is not a slight towards you, I'm just, um, trying to think of ways to, 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 to make this work for our community with, with some of the barriers.
Whatever we can do to get the word out and to look at our processes. Some of them we can't change, but some of them we can always look at.
Appreciate you, I appreciate you. And yes, I have one more thing to talk about. Yes, yes, yes.
Okay. With me?
No, not you.
Oh, okay. Alderman Gregory, I'm sorry.
My last thing, my last thing. Um, Chief, oh, oh, I'm sorry.
She called your name.
Hey, I have a question for Director Raising, if you don't mind. Really quick, so you said the third one, that's the community-wide means-tested exterior renovation?
Citywide.
What did I say?
Yeah, I think you said community-wide, that's okay.
Oh, okay, okay.
In other words, it, it really encompasses the city, as it says, citywide. It's a totally different program, it's not tax increment financing.
Okay, yeah. So it's, and, and you're saying we have one applicant for it?
An applicant, I probably didn't clarify. What I, what I meant to say was we had someone come in because we're out in the community and they were looking for resources. They hadn't, they weren't familiar with any of the resources. Um, and we were able to work with them and rather than be disheartened that they didn't qualify for the, the TIF programs, they were out of that, that territory, we were able to sit down and talk to them. Even the program's different and, um, has different requirements and ways that it's administered. They were pleased to know about a program and they are getting some support.
Oh, that's good. And is that our only interest in that program or?
No, we have much, mu, much more interest. And like I said, irrelevant, inadvertently, I was just saying that that all came from that community meeting. I apologize for the confusion.
Yeah, thanks. No worries. Alderman Gregory?
No, I'm gonna let.
Don't go far.
Nope, my colleagues want to talk.
No, I want him to be finished.
I ain't gonna say nothing else. Are you sure? All right, last thing, last thing. Chief, Chief, you ain't gotta come up here, but, but I do, I am, I am, um, um, I, I, I ain't on you, Ms. Amy, I'm good.
Your time?
You're good. You're good, you're good, you're good. All right, unless they want you. But Chief, when you get time, um, can we talk about this meeting that, that we're gonna have between you and Ms. Standage? And, and then, um, last night at the community forum, one of the, one of the things that was mentioned that, that I am in agreement with is us meeting not only, um, with one community stakeholder, but them all, so they all can be on the same page and we can be on the same page together. I would love to be in those meetings, but if not, that's fine. But I do think one of our council members or, or a person from the areas that we, that we, um, have the issues the most, um, be there, so we can, so we can really, um, talk about these things, um, together, so everybody's on the same page and know, um, the common goal that we're all trying to get to. And that's it, I promise, I ain't gonna say nothing else tonight. Well, I don't.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman Williams, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start with you since you're up here, ma'am, please. Uh, and then I need Director Posey to come back too, please. So with, with, with your department, I want to thank you first for the successes that Ward Three has had with the residency. You know, with the, what you just reported, that's great news for us. Uh, on the residence side, on our business side, uh, I really only have two major projects that I'm trying to babysit through all these processes. The first one would be, uh, Ring of Champions, uh, which, and, and thank both of your staff, both Julias, you know, both of them have, have been excellent and, and working and really assisting and helping. And it's become a big feel-good thing for a lot of the neighborhood association and the folks over there that are aware of these programs, as you know, Ring of Champions and what they're trying to do on Cook Street. And the other one I'm, I'm wanting to inquire about is MJ Chicken, Fish and Chicken going into Burger King. And I was gonna ask you, are we, we still tight and, and going the right directions on both of them? Or have we run into any snags that I need to know about?
What I can share with you is, um, we're, we always work with our other, um, colleagues across, or other departments, agencies here in the city. So we're working at, with building and zoning, we're working with all of those processes through all of this.
Was legal giving you any trouble?
I give everybody trouble, but, uh.
Okay, but, but, but we're feeling good about things, with both of those.
Forward and looking, you know, i, i, in any of this, there's so many moving pieces.
Yes.
But those are projects that are, um, being communicated about and, uh, we're trying to move forward as appropriate.
Yeah, so, so in these programs, in Ward Three and those businesses, those are the two big ones and pretty much the only ones. You know, there's other wards that have, you know, ten to twelve, but, you know, I'm just gonna push to get those two main ones done. If I could, I appreciate your help. Director Posey, thank you, ma'am, I appreciate you. I'm not gonna rehash because we've been here a long time and the Chair and, uh, the Alderman jumped me ahead of me. But anyway, um, I asked for some E O C reports, a, and, and that's very important to me because you, as you know, my two issues, uh, with, with, with some of this, me and you'll just have to agree to disagree about the trades. The trades are racist and practice racism, and that's why it's harder for us to find people with the trades. The ones, the brothers and the pastors and the folks in my childhood, growing up, that was in the trades, they were treated very badly. So the trades don't have a big, good history that you're describing to me. In saying that, I'm trying to keep open mind because it may be a, a new day. It was with the police union. I mean, so, so things can change and get better. So all I'm asking you is to get me those reports because I, not only do I want to hear what you're saying, I want to hear what the state is saying to you and what you're saying to the state. And last week I, I asked for them, so can I please get them this week?
Yes, sir.
I thank you, and you know it was three years worth.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much. And that's all I have, and that's how you do it. So thank you.
You're quite welcome, thank you. All right, um, so, so, uh, any new business to come before the committee?
Oh, look, did directors get new business?
Oh, okay. Uh, Director Posey?
And the librarian. I do, technically, I guess it's not new business because we do it every year, but this Saturday, October the fourth, is our annual Build Springfield program, uh, from ten to one at Bunfield, which is thirteen hundred East Division Street, over in Ward Three. Bell's finest barbecue, and two, Bell's finest barbecue will be providing free barbecue for everyone there. They got the best brisket this side of Mississippi. So I would encourage everyone to come out. We're gonna have a lot of trucks for the kids to come out. It's a de facto toucher truck. We've gotten a couple more, uh, organizations that have reached out today to bring even more. Every city agency will be out there, close to forty community partners will be out there. So it's gonna be a great time with great people. Come hang out, give yourself some food, get yourself some resources, bring the kids, bring the grandparents, brother, sister, aunt, uncle, niece, nephew, whoever you got, and we'd love to see you out there.
Yeah, and thank you, and thank the mayor. This, this is, this area is in much need, so I appreciate you again.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, um, yes, go right ahead.
Hi, Ms. Harrison.
Good evening, hello, everybody. So, um, you are invited to the mobile branch grand opening. Did you guys receive your invitation?
Yes, we did.
Thank goodness, okay. So it will be this Thursday, October second, from two to four P M. on the Capital Street Plaza. Please come and take a peek at our amazing mobile bus. We'll have lovely, lovely refreshments and we, you will be served with opening remarks by Mayor Buscher, Deanna Jones, our outreach manager, and myself. I also wanted to share a little bit, a little bit with you about the mobile bus stops. Um, their most popular stops so far have been the Y M C A West, Saint John's Lutheran Church, and Indian Hills Park. So I just want to let you know where, where it's been cooking at. I also wanted to talk to you about, um, your opinion, it matters. Uh, we want to hear from you. Please partake in the community survey now available until mid-October. This ten-minute survey is available online at Lincolnlibrary.info. You can click on a Q R code, um, that's on our handy bookmarks. And we also have, if you prefer paper, I have paper format. It takes about ten minutes to fill out, but we really are seeking your, your feedback as we try to go into our strategic planning. We want to have a really, really good five-year plan, and we need to hear from everybody in our community. And that's all that I wanted to share with you tonight.
Director, I have a question. Would there be a place on this survey to, um, request, uh, you include an update, uh, upgrades to our A V equipment in the meeting rooms on the first floor of the library?
Yes, yes.
We, we struggled greatly last night.
Yes.
Um, and I know it's no fault of any staff. I think we probably just have a situation like we had up here, you know, just probably old equipment.
It needs a little help.
Yeah, yeah. Because it's an important room.
It is important.
It holds a lot of people and we need to be able to have people have their voices heard.
I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Okay, any other new business? No? All right, uh, now it is time for citizens' request to address committee. Um, are there citizens who wish to address the committee?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
First one is Kayla McGuire. Kayla McGuire. Lisa Johnson.
I see here that you included Dr. Lisa Johnson on your request to speak.
I certainly did, thank you for noticing.
You're welcome.
The last chief of police, Scarlett, was on watch when a police officer was driving drunk and hit two innocent citizens, putting one of them in a coma while the mayor lied on screen about the conversations that she had with the victims' families. That same police chief was in charge of an Officer Peters who falsely accused Tiara Standage of some supposed crime that she still has not been formally charged for. Then citing that the statute of limitations was eighteen to thirty, thirty-six months. Then Police Chief Scarlett cooperated in the threats to Mrs., Miss Standage's future by asking her to cooperate in a non-existent diversion program made up out of the imagination of the state's attorney so that she could be some type of representative for the police department to our community. I have checked with crimina, criminologists across the country, and I have cited the literature. There is no such diversion program as the one that he mentioned to Miss Standage. None that requires the accused to serve as a representative of the police department that is holding them hostage psychologically until their statute of limitations expires. But when Tiara was intelligent enough to know that this was a trap, Chief Scarlett sat in the back of this very room pleading with her and a colleague, "Come on, guys, help me out here," he said. While he was pleading, another white woman was standing up cursing and screaming at the top of her lungs while nothing happened to her. That's the same police chief who said he wanted to establish good relationships in the community, but then refused to meet with the A C L U because Tiara Standage was to be in attendance. That's the same police chief who swore that Springfield police were nothing like the Sheriff's Department when Sean Grayson murdered Sonia Massey. But then it was revealed that these jump-out boys were exhibiting a form of police brutality that made black people gasp. The same chief who was on watch when the A C L U revealed evidence from the Illinois Department of Transportation that the S P D stopped black folks at almost six times the rate of whites. Now, in subsequent A C L U meetings with the police, the current Chief Bell showed a PowerPoint slideshow with a scatter plot, um, of Shot, ShotSpotter, meant to stress a point that the east side is so incredibly dangerous. But he never showed us the source of his numbers so that our analysts could check it for ourselves. And he never gave any answer as to why his policemen still stop black people so often, no matter what side of the city they are, are on. In fact, all Bell's shot, slideshow revealed was that he was willing to push any narrative he could to paint black, brown, and poor people in the most negative light that he could in order to justify the harsh treatment that we receive. Three weeks ago, we witnessed this new police chief with his whole chest that he would not meet with the faith, the faith coalition for the common good because Tiara Standage is on their leadership roster. This Chief Bell has openly stated that he also would not meet with the community at large, but would instead meet with certain groups. And this is a point that was raised at last night's community forum, for which Bell was absent because he had already said he would not meet with the community at large. So all the hoopla that he raised three weeks ago about not being invited was for naught. Why would someone invite him to a space that he had already stated to a journalist that he would never visit? In fact, why wouldn't he meet with the community at large? Is he scared of black people, poor people? Because all of these shootings and beatings across the country are supposedly because the police are in fear for their lives every time a black person is around. If he is, then an honest dialogue is not what this police chief was ever looking for, either when he was in management under Scarlett or in his current position as chief. He is looking for abject obedience, something that black and poor people have already had enough of with police brutality cloaked as protection and service. In criminological terms, we would call these the mayor's known associates. And all of us have heard warnings from our elders about the company we keep, but the mayor acts as if she never heard those words. Or maybe she's just acting as she, as if she is proud of her insendiary and racially biased associations, and note that I'm not using the word that I have used before. No worries, we now know for sure, and all we had to do was wait. So I'll say this, racism and homophobia are not political viewpoints. People having the right to exist in peace, whether we are trans, black, gay, or poor, is never up for debate. And one last thing, Tiara Standage has been crowned a leader of this community by the Massey family ever since she organized so many peaceful protests after Sonia Massey's murder by police. So the mayor is certainly mistaken if she or the chief believe that they have any right to hold our chosen leaders up for grabs. You don't choose our leaders, we do.
Thank you.
James Johnson. James Johnson.
Whoo, let me pray. Palms up. I'm gonna start off with a poem because that's a hard one to follow, but there's some truth to a lot of that. I'm for the truth, no matter who tells it. I'm for justice, no matter who, who is for or against. I'm a human being first and foremost. And such, I am for whoever and whatever benefits humanity as a whole. Malcolm X. Now, I want to hit a few spots, and I'm probably gonna go over five minutes. But I want to piggyback because everybody else had to say what they want to say, and I'm gonna say what I want to say. Now, I had a chance to digest that last meeting and thought about it. And my first question is, I wonder who called, other than the police officers, all those other people that were sitting in the stands and standing along the walls? I guess that was the support for the police department. But Sean, let me ask you, when something go down over there, where's all these people? Because Mayor, these people back here that's here all the time, when something go down, they're the ones who gonna be out there. Them people that were sitting in the stands, and I know, and I made sure I saw every last one of them, they ain't coming. Disruption is my word, and believe me, disruption is coming. We have a dictator in the office. And he's out for a civil war, believe it or not. If you don't believe me, listen to the rhetoric to the military today. It ought to make you nervous. Now, I'm trying to stay calm and be cool, and I'm, I'm gonna continue. But the meeting last night at the library, first of all, too small of a room, one. Second of all, no parking. Second of all, no parking. People have to walk blocks in the dark. This is not the day and time where we want to be walking blocks in the dark, especially the women and the children in this community, and some black males by themselves. I wouldn't advise it. Now, I do agree with Sean, and I'm glad he heard me, and the chief had heard me. And to all the black communities or the groups in the community, we're done with the single one-on-one meetings when it comes to the police chief. This man meets with about 20 different groups. Now, all of them ain't dealing with ours, but I'm calling for, because last night was just to start the conversation. But let me speak to everybody that be listening to me and under the sound of my voice now. Let's start calling all the people who have issues with the police right into this chamber, and don't be scared, because this group right here ain't gonna know until they come and tell them, until y'all come and tell them from your own mouths. Because see, this stuff been happening since I've been around, for years, and I'm about the longest-running one coming up in here and speak. And you know what everybody say? James, we still dealing with the same problem. But guess what? In my 15, 20 years, there's really only been two shootings of human beings or black males, and one was at that detention center that was, you know, I don't think that was necessary force, but I'm not here for that. But we're gonna start meeting with the chief, and we're gonna stop all this individual divide and conquer stuff, because right about now, we need to come together. Now, what's going on in our country? And our media has shown it today that, you know, ICE is being attacked in Chicago. So let me tell y'all what's going on, and listen carefully, because things are gonna get sticky. There's three phases to this, the three laws, and the media is part of it. They're gonna create division that's to divide the country, create the chaos, that's what's happening now. And then they're gonna do the control.
And that's bringing the military in. And we don't need the military.
...to come in.
Because that's what they want.
Democracy is under attack.
I'm gonna repeat that.
Our democracy is under attack.
And our forefathers.
Had to fight.
And some of us.
We're gonna all come together, because I'm not gonna point your finger.
Right about now, we all need to come together.
We all gonna stand together, because there's some men.
Who are not going to continue to allow our women.
Black or white.
To be air-pulled by.
Police or anybody else.
Mr. Johnson.
Some of us, we're gonna stand up.
Can you wrap it up?
I know, and I already told you I'm gonna open my mouth.
I'm just asking that you wrap it up.
So what I'm saying is.
Next week, police.
I'm gonna pray to God that you guys are here.
Mayor here, and I'm gonna talk directly to the mayor.
But we're gonna lay down some new rules and some new laws.
Thank you.
Caitlin Weiss.
Chair.
Chair.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Alderman Purchase.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, I do want to ask, like, how do we deal with some of these situations? And so I'm from Maywood, and Burlwin had a really, which is like five minutes away from where I grew up at, had a really bad situation that made national news with that agency and people, you know, peacefully protesting, and then it got out of hand. I know that we wouldn't know where some of these areas are. Do we have an area in Springfield that we know of that they may be having a station or a facility?
For what? I'm sorry.
ICE.
For ICE?
Yes, so some people don't know where some of this stuff is, so I'm just asking just even for me to know.
We have no correspondence with any federal enforcement agency, so.
And if they did come, would they inform you all that they're coming into our city?
I've never spoken to an ICE agent in almost 20 years.
They already here.
Okay.
So I just. We do, I'm sorry, we do deal with FBI, DEA, stuff like that, but as far as immigration enforcement agencies, I've never had any correspondence with them in any way.
Is it any rules for them to acknowledge our Springfield Police Department when they step foot into our city, our jurisdiction, or no?
I don't know that they would. They might just do whatever it is they do and not let us know.
And if something should go wrong and they break the law, do we have any juris, does that go over to you, Corporation Council? I'm just asking, just because I seen what happened in my home area, and it was very disturbing.
So are police officers by state law are not allowed to work with ICE to do any immigration enforcement? So that's what our standard operating procedure says. As far as our enforcement of breaking federal law, that would fall on the federal agencies themselves. And in situations like what you're mentioning or what's going on in Chicago, you've seen states often turn to the courts to prevent that from happening, to seek injunction. Our, and so that's the court route that's been taken.
Okay, thank you. That's just what I wanted to ask for clarity.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you both. Next up, Tiara Lee. Is that who you have?
Caitlin Weiss.
Oh, okay, I thought she wasn't here.
She left.
She left. Tiara Lee. Tiara Lee.
Hello, I would just like to state publicly, well, I am speaking on behalf of myself and the organization that I'm involved with. I really don't want to meet with the chief anymore. I don't want to meet with the chief with Alderman. I don't want to meet with the chief with Kelly Hurst. The original meeting was to invite the chief to a town hall that the whole community came to, to speak up for his department and to come to a table for a conversation that led to change in our community, and he held fast in not attending that meeting because I was there. I don't have any personal interest of speaking with him. I want him to speak to our community, so all the trying to put me in a meeting with him, I'm good on that. Good evening, council members. I want to thank Alderman Gregory, Alderman Williams, Alderwoman Purchase, Alderwoman Notrino, and Alderwoman Conley, she's not here today, for showing up yesterday to our community town hall, as well as all the department directors and community members who came out and represented in a collective meeting about progressive change in our community. Your presence matters, and your willingness to show up speaks volumes. Unfortunately, our mayor and chief of police chose not to attend. They apparently had other priorities, but we did get a representative from the SPD, and that was appreciated. Still, I had expected more officers to be present and active in a conversation about how community members and law enforcement can come together to make our cities safer and stronger. I also want to highlight that yesterday's town hall was a huge success. Over 100 community members showed up eager to be a part of the conversation and push forward for change. That level of turnout proves that people in Springfield want progress, they want transparency, and they are ready to work together for solutions. I want to acknowledge the officers and deputies who did attend last night, and I was sincere when I thanked them for being open and progressive enough to engage in real conversations with the community. That willingness is a critical step forward. But the contrast is hard to ignore. Just two weeks ago, nearly 50 SPD officers filled this very chamber to clap for an hour-long presentation about me. So one could only hope that they would be just as enthusiastic to show up to a conversation about healing the harm inflicted on our community. Also, the level of disrespect shown to the chair of this meeting and her guest speaker today is diabolical when I know for a fact that all 10 alders were not given any prior notice or approval process for a presentation the chief made about one person for over an hour two weeks ago. Let me be clear, all of the video footage shown in these chambers two weeks ago was already viewed by SPD and already on the table when they asked me to help bridge the gap. Somehow, even after that protest, the state's attorney and police thought I had the community relationships to help bring the police and the black community together. I have never refused to come to a meeting until just now, or a table where conversations about bettering my community were taking place. I only refuse to do free work for SPD. I have organized several healing spaces for our community. I have planned events and networked with the leaders of our community and listened to their concerns. The only difference is that these efforts were under the official control of the Springfield Police Department. And so now, suddenly, I'm told that I'm not qualified enough to be in the room when they meet with various coalitions that I'm an active member of. That refusal is not about qualifications, it's about control. I am here tonight to say that real progress requires courage. It requires leaders who are willing to speak up and have hard conversations, not hide from them. And it requires that we, together, decide that the safety and future of our community is more important than ego or politics. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, boy. Well, I'm not gonna start my moment of silence because I have five minutes. So, to Misty Busher, the Honorable Mayor of Springfield and the City Council. Illinois history is indigenous history. Cahokia, the largest urban center in, no Cahokia, the largest center, largest urban center in North America before the arrival of Europeans, it's a quick drive-away. The city flourishes almost 1,000 years near modern-day St. Louis. It may have had as many as 40,000 people living in its height. For comparison's sakes, no city in North America reached a similar population until Philadelphia in the 1780s. In 1100 CE, Cahokia had a large population, a larger population than London or Paris. The Mississippian people who founded Cahokia live across Illinois, including in the place where Springfield is located today. In the 700 years that separated Cahokia from the arrival of Europeans, many other indigenous peoples also inhabited Springfield and central Illinois, including the Kikapu, the Kaskaskia, the Miame, and the Peoria nations. Even today, remnants of Springfield indigenous past remain in our places, in our place names. Our state is named after the Illinois Confederation and the Alina Wac Nation. Closer to home, Sangamon County names arise from the Potawami words, Sangamon meaning "where there is plenty to eat" or "land of milk and honey." Sangamon County remains a place where there is plenty to eat, especially if you like horseshoes. Springfield history is indigenous history in other ways, too. In 1838, the Potawami nation was forcibly removed from their land in Indiana in March across the state to reservations what is now eastern Kansas. More than 800 Potawami elders, children, and families walked the Trail of Death through Springfield in September 29, 1838. They traveled through Monticello and Decatur First, then Springfield, New Berlin, Jacksonville, Exeter, and Naples. While passing through Springfield, two Potawami children die in the night. In the year 2000, the Polka Gun Band of Potawami placed a plaque near the old state capitol commemorating the Trail of Death passage through Springfield. The plaque describes how the Potawami dressed in their finery and did their best to appear proud as they marched through the city. Today, Illinois has the highest, 23rd highest, population of indigenous peoples in the United States, but it also has one of the highest populations of urban Indians anywhere. In Chicago, more than 30,000 people can claim native ancestry inherited from both parents. Today, the United States increasingly recognizes the importance of indigenous people, culture, and heritage of our country's history and its future. More localities have adopted resolutions proclaiming the second Monday of October to be Indigenous Peoples' Day. In 1989, South Dakota recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day as becoming the first state to do so. Since then, eight states have formally recognized Indigenous Peoples' Day as a state holiday, and 11 others have made proclamations to support it. Hundreds of local communities have done so as well, including Oak Park, Havana, Champaign, Illinois. This could be especially auspicious year for the city of Springfield to proclaim the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. This October, renowned native photographer Sharon Holstratten is scheduled to have an exhibit of her work, Dancing for Our Tribe, at the Illinois State Museum. This will feature her photographs of contemporary Potawami nation members wearing traditional and modern regalia. In addition, three years from now, 2028, is the 190th anniversary of the Potawami Trail of Death. The Potawami Trail of Death Association will hold a caravan to retrace the deadly journey that 859 members of Potawami nation were forced to walk in 1838, passing through Springfield on their way. For all these reasons, the undersigned organizations urged Mayor Busher and the Springfield elder persons to adopt proclamation naming the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day in Springfield. I mean, it was Indigenous Peoples' Day, nobody even recognized it because, why? Why don't they recognize it? Either way, here are some of the signatures that we have had that have signed for Indigenous Peoples' Day, the ASME Union, Central Trades Labor Union, the Phoenix Center, Black Lives Matter Springfield, the Faith Coalition for Common Good, 5051 Organization, Umbilian Black Springfield, Springfield for Palestine, Intricate Mind, Lincoln Land DSA, board members, school board members Erica Austin, Ken Gilmore, Beth Fila Wolf, Micah Miller, Karen Ebering, and Pastor Susan Phillips and more. We need to proclaim the second Monday of October as Indigenous Peoples' Day. It's all of our day.
Thank you.
Hey, y'all, I'm just running with it today. I didn't prepare anything. I'm gonna read a couple of things, though. These are all quotes. He said it was a huge mistake to pass the Civil Rights Act in 1964. He blamed Jewish money for ruining American culture. He said gay people are destructive and endorsed them having them put to death. He said the Second Amendment is worth the cost of some gun deaths. One guess who said all that crap? Yep, Charlie Kirk. So, a couple of weeks ago, an ultimatum was given to a city director to be gone peacefully or get publicly fired. Well, he chose to go peacefully. Got another quote for you. Charlie Kirk was the epitome of an American patriot. He was peaceful, thoughtful, believed in the free exchange of opinions, and he welcomed peaceful debate. There is no room for violence in the political arena, and those responsible must be held accountable. No person nor family deserves to go through such a tragedy. May God bless Charlie Kirk and his family. While I don't condone political violence of any kind, the fact that any alderman would post such great things about such an awful human being blows my mind. Word one, by the way. I mean, but that's not ultimately what I'm here to talk about. That's just something I meant to bring up, you know, a week or two ago when all this What I'm actually here to talk about are a couple of different little things. The fact that a impromptu meeting was held yesterday in Ward 10. I've foiled those emails talking about that, by the way, so I'm hopefully gonna hear about those within the next 10 days. You got five business days and then five business days, only if you requested extension. That impromptu feel-good meeting, in my opinion, because of how it was put on, was to avoid a much harder discussion, a much harder discussion. That discussion is how to fix what we got going on right now. We've got police misconduct in our neighborhoods. We've got police misconduct all within this department. Fixing it from the inside is not going to happen. The police don't fix themselves. The government does not fix itself. We, the people, fix the government. We, the people, fix the police department. You know who typically doesn't get shot at? When they go talk, go into some of the bad. When they go talk to, go into some of the bad neighborhoods? Firefighters and paramedics, you know why? Because they're not shooting innocent people. But I digress. That meeting last night at the library should have had a police chief and a mayor there. Those discussions need to be had. And having good leadership is what we need. Not leadership that hides or cowers behind locked doors, behind a desk, behind bulletproof glass. Did any of y'all know that there is no way, none, to contact the mayor directly? In fact, I'm about ninety percent certain that I guess her chief of staff gave me a bad email on purpose the other day. Yeah. Oh, yeah. So, I come to y'all to recommend that we fix that. Why can't I talk to the mayor? Like, why wouldn't the mayor have like an open door policy? You know, hey, is the mayor in the office? Yeah, okay, cool, can I talk to her real quick? Yeah, no problem, go ahead. We can't even access the mayor's office. We can't even talk to her chief of staff or her, the people at the front desk for her because it's behind a locked door. I've never seen a mayor's office that was behind a locked door and bulletproof glass. That job's not that hard.
It's not that dangerous.
Thank you.
Yeah, I digress. Oh, chief.
Crystal Page.
You guys are afraid of water, so I brought you some, uh, brought you a train.
Hello. Go ahead and start.
Yes, yes.
My first time here.
Oh, sorry. Yes, you're good to go.
Okay, um, I'm asking for some help. Um, I, I moved, I have a couple of dogs, and I have a neighbor who is continuously calling animal control on me. She is now contacting the police, has been out there because animal control told her she is harassing me. Um, the dogs are up to, they're, they got their shots. Um, the big boy that I have has actually protected me from two severe domestic issues to where I have, I was able to escape out of my house and run to the hospital. And the police department did, um, go into my home to put him in his crate, I call it his box, because of the attack was so bad. The second attack, he got into my house again, he, where I was completely body slammed on my coffee table. This dog laid on top of me and took some beatings from the person, so I would not sustain the beatings. He is not, he did not try to attack the person that attacked me. He was more or less trying to protect me. He's my protector. He was an abandoned dog. I took him in, I fed him, got his weight back, took him, got him all, you know, vaccinated. I have a couple little small dogs. Um, and she continues to call on me. And her landlord, who lives next door to her, has asked her to stop. It is unnecessary. And she says she will not. She, I've got chickens, like a lot of people have now. She's even called on that situation when her landlord lives right next door to her and has several, several turkeys, chickens, and, you know, stuff like that in his background, and he's grounded, and he's legal. And I'm legal, I'm more than legal. I have three coops and I run for them chickens and I let them out to free range. And she would still call. And animal control has told her, if she continues to call, they're going to put fines on her because it is harassment. And now she is calling the police department. They have been out there two weeks ago with me, with this dog. He was chained up, um, properly chained up. He is so big, I mean, I did have to get a, a, a tree chain for him. He is not a pit bull that she continued to say he was. He is a mastiff, he stands up to my hip. Nonviolent at all. And she just continues to call, and it needs to stop. Her landlord has asked her to stop, who lives next door to her, and, um, she's a house in between me. And she's like, no, she's not going to stop. Um, his turkeys come out sometimes, and my chickens, you know, they kind of mingle back and forth. I take his turkey, I put it back in his yard, because that's what neighbors are to do. You know what I'm saying? And, but for me, she's gonna call and turn me in. She turns me in, she won't turn her landlord in, she won't turn the people down the street in the Scotts. She won't turn nobody in, but she's continuously turning me, and I'm tired of it, and I'm done. My dog is, for my protection, he saved me twice from severe domestic issues. Um, I escaped out of my house twice, once through a window to escape the person who was attacking me. Got to the, um, Memorial Hospital. Snowing, icing, all I had was socks on my feet. That's how bad it was. And the officer on duty went to my home and has put my dog in his crate, because I couldn't do that. I was just trying to, for my safety. Both times, an officer has went into my home and has put this dog into a crate, has taken photos of what has happened from the person that has gotten to my home and attacked me. Same person. So, if he's gonna allow a police officer in uniform to come into my home, both times, under that situation, had took several beatings from the person who was beating me, didn't attack him, but was protecting me and laying on me and protecting me. He, I don't think he's considered a vicious dog. And she needs to stop. And I'm asking for either animal control or the police department to step up and do something because it's, she's not gonna stop. Her landlord's asked her to stop, and she won't. Them sources could be helping somebody else that is in need.
Yeah, definitely. I, um, don't have an answer for you. What? Oh, what ward?
I am on Rutledge by Memorial Hospital.
Alderwoman Purchase will take good care of you.
Yeah, um, thank you, I appreciate it. I shouldn't have had to come here to do this, but something has to be done with her.
Absolutely.
My, I mean, they, they have came out, I, they have checked my chickens. They said I have more than enough, um, legal in that situation, more than what I should be. I mean, my dogs have been vaccinated. This was a, a dog that I took in, he is a big dog. She tried to use the pit bull theory. They said, animal control has told her he's not a pit bull, he's too big to be a pit bull, he's more of a mastiff, but he's a gentle giant. You know?
Thank you for coming. Like I said, Alderwoman Purchase will be in touch.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Uh, Alderman Williams.
Oh, that's why I, I, Sean got to acting like this tonight. No problem, thank you.
Oh, okay.
Bob Emel. Bob Emel. Jordan Shaw. We got an RFP out.
Good evening. So, a few weeks ago, uh, we had an impromptu documentary and presentation, which, uh, if you watch the footage and it ever cuts back to me, I look very confused because I have no idea what's happening. Um, and I'm not technically a, a critic, as were, but I would say that footage seemed incomplete. Wasn't telling a narrative as per se, just looked like they just grabbed whatever footage they had and just put it together. Now, I know the whole point of that presentation was, um, asking to move forward, and I understand that. But it seems like it was, you know, when we were kids and we were playing tag, we would go tag your it, tag your it. It seemed as if it was a situation where you had that one annoying kid who, right before recess ended, just punched you in the back of the head, screamed your it, and then game's over, we're good, it's over. That's what it seemed like. It just seemed like he was metaphorically punching Tierra in the back of the head, even though literally she was choked. And then proceeded to say, eh, we're done, we're good, it's all good, let's move on. That doesn't really seem fair and doesn't seem the appropriate way to handle that situation. And if I were in Tierra's shoes, I also wouldn't want to talk to the chief if this is how I've been handled for this specific situation for over a year. I get it, and I understand the frustration. And considering that I'm like whiter than the walls in some situations, that's big that if I understand the frustration of it. I understand that it gets kind of aggravating and annoying to just have people just yelling at you. Like a few weeks ago, not to call anyone out, but a few weeks ago, there was an alder person who was getting yelled at by two different people in the audience. And I do understand that's frustrating. But again, you gotta understand that on the other side of things, if you just keep trying to get people to listen to you over and over and over again, that frustration and anger is gonna come through. And you shouldn't take it personally. You shouldn't have a vendetta against a single person to make an hour horrible documentary about what you think was upsetting, but really it wasn't. You can't take it personally. And if you want the community to grow and to move forward, you should actually look into yourself and realize that your biases and downright racism is just needing to get fixed. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ken Pasha.
Wait two weeks for this. So what I witnessed two weeks ago, when I was younger, I had an artist I loved, and one of his interviews, he said the LAPD was the largest organized gang in the city. It wasn't the Crips or Bloods. What was that? That was an organized gang effort. Fifty people showed up en masse to intimidate citizens of the city. Do you think my friends are here this week? They're not. They were intimidated. It scared them to have fifty police officers show up en masse. And they can tell you that it's free speech, we have the right to show up? When do they show up for anything else? When you seen fifty of them show up for some, a character assassination of a community member? You guys should be embarrassed by this stuff. It's absolutely disgusting that a police officer, let alone a police chief, would feel entitled to that kind of behavior. He didn't show up to that community meeting last night because he doesn't care. He can tell you he does, but I'm the kind of guy that believes in actions. And for someone who talks a lot, my actions speak louder than words. Where am I? I'm at every meeting. I show up to everything, and I pay attention to all of it because somebody should. Because that kind of behavior is the kind of thing that happens behind closed doors. You know why he wants to meet her in private? Let's not muck about here. He doesn't want his words held against him. He doesn't want to be held accountable like every coward in history. And the kind of person that has a problem with Indigenous Peoples' Day would line up right next to him. Because quite frankly, that hour-long presentation wasn't announced to anybody, specifically the Black Alderman Caucus that had met with him less than an hour before. What do you call that kind of behavior from a city leader? We've had thirteen city directors depart from this administration. It is an absolute circus. And we have aldermen that come up here in the middle of someone else's meeting and try and find a rule to shut them down. You should be embarrassed by your behavior. Because you know when you and that chuckle clown show up and do those things? When it's black people, when it's brown people. And if you don't think that's obvious to everybody else, you don't understand yourself and the behavior that you exhibit and how it comes off to everyone else around you. And at your age, that is embarrassing. Because quite frankly, I live in a city that's a capital city. We have better politicians to learn from. They're right down the street. You don't have to act mystified as to what good behavior looks like or good leadership. It's around us. Champaign, Bloomington, do you know what their leaders do with these kind of meetings? I'll tell you who I saw at the last meeting when it came to these kind of community events. It was the last mayor. Langfelder's on every video when those things come up. You know why? Because he was actually out there, and he was about that, and he stood on business. You didn't win that election, Jim lost it. And we're gonna find that out in the next cycle. Because I'll tell you right now, this clown show, I'm not the only one that hears Cali Oop music every time it kicks off. And if you don't think bigger people than me, smarter people than me, more accomplished people than me have the exact same thing to say, you're not listening. They'll say it behind closed doors because it's not time yet. I'll say it anytime I like because nobody intimidates me. I've dealt with the police my whole life. Go check my record, it's pages long. Still free, still got my license, and you'll never silence me. Because guess what? It's gonna take a bullet to the neck to do that. And I know not one person in this entire city is man enough to do it. Because quite frankly, I'm not scared, and you shouldn't be. They're snatching people off the street right now, less than three hours from us. You seen that video of that poor DoorDash driver getting chased down by ICE? We should be embarrassed that that's our country. Come to my city, see what happens. I'll tell you right now, I ain't gonna let you chase down people in front of me. You can lock me up all you want. Because I'll tell you right now, it's gonna be a fight for our lives. If you don't see what they're doing right now at the higher levels, we just had a meeting of the generals. Do you guys have any familiarity with the Weimar Republic? When Hitler called all his generals forward for a loyalty meeting? That's what we just watched happen today. And if you don't know what comes next after that, I strongly encourage you to start watching more documentaries. Because quite frankly, hope is not gonna get you through. Ideals will not save your family and friends. Kind words, empty promises, not showing up to meetings and acting like you're the authority? That is not leadership. Leadership requires being present. It requires taking the hits. And it means it doesn't matter if it was you or your administration or anybody else. You stand up and you take it because that's what you applied for. That's what you signed up for, and that's what you asked for. And if it's too tough now, the door's right there. Thank you.
Brianna Day.